Good afternoon. Shall I call you the mayor of sub-county Dublin, the Dublin County Council? Or we call you a councillor? Or councillor? All three in one?
At this stage, with two days to go, you can call me Paul.
Paul, thank you very much again. This is Logan Raji from theimmigrants.ie. Welcome back to all of us and all of you. I know I've been missed for a while. I was in the hospital for nearly two weeks, but back in action again. And on behalf of theimmigrants.ie, thank you kindly for letting us have a few words with you.
Pleasure.
Now, I know you're an independent councillor. And if you can just go back, you know, a little bit about your previous life before you became the mayor here, and the present, and what you hope for the future?
Okay, well, historically, I joined the Green Party in 1989 as a student. And I ran in the local elections in an area I didn't live in in 1991. I contested several general elections. I got elected for the first time in 1999 in the Luton electoral area as a Green Party councillor. In 2002, I was elected to the Dáil as a Green Party TD, re-elected in 2007. As you know, the Green Party room in Fianna Fáil during the economic crash, which Fianna Fáil would have been blamed for largely, but we got kicking and we all lost.
Yes, all of yours, yes.
So from that period of time, I was the first politician to ever concede an election by Twitter. And I just said, I concede with good grace. And I got out of politics. I had nothing to do with it. Did some work as a journalist, because that's my background and training.
All right.
And attempted to write a book, and then what about passed away? We had a third child, so that kind of went by the wayside. But I did get to record an album during that period.
Oh!
Under the pseudonym of His Sweet Surprise, a music album. Got to number one on one of the download charts, played on a number of radio stations.
Very good!
But at my age, and also in terms of having that former politician tag, it's very hard not to have people laugh first and then listen. Whereas if people listen first, then it's fair comment to laugh. So it was kind of treated a little bit jokingly in some ways. So for me, I enjoy doing music. I've busked in town for 13 years. So to do the album is something I love doing. I plan to do more music at some stage. And during my term as mayor, I joined in quite a few choirs of different things.
Wonderful.
So I love singing, I love music. It was great to be able to express that, but I always felt that I'd get back into politics. If someone bought me a lottery ticket and I won 70 million in the Euromillions, I wouldn't retire to a subtropical island that's high enough to avoid global warming. I'd still be involved in politics to some degree.
Yes, yes.
So it's a, the way I would say it is, music is a labour of love, politics is a vocation. So I got involved in politics because I was deeply angered and resentful of the way certain larger political parties rezoned land at the behest of developers.
Yes, that was a bit of a tricky, tricky situation, isn't it?
And they put lots of housing in Luton, but no facilities or infrastructure. So that's what got me into it. I was also involved in debating in second level, where I was on a team that got to be all around the final of the Concern Third World Debates, as they were known then.
Yes.
So I learnt a lot about how aid to developing countries is often tied into buying our products, armed shipments, or not allowing value to be added, just getting them to export the raw materials so the value could be added in Europe or the US. So that gave me a kind of a social conscience, which continued when I was in college studying journalism, where I was involved in a letters campaign at the time. It sounds like deep history now, but just at the end of Gorbachev's period, there was a food shortage in Russia, in the former, in the Commonwealth and States. We were involved in a campaign to assist them, because we thought it might be a democratic help or a democratic transition. And it's that brought us up to 2014, which, when I decided to run as a candidate again in the local elections in the Luton electoral area, Luton, Pannistown, I wasn't in a party at that stage. And I hadn't resigned in any tiff with the Greens, but I'd just have been out of politics. So I went to my own right to get elected as an independent.
Very good.
And as part of that grouping, the agreement we made at the time was that there would be two merities. So my predecessor, Gus O'Connell, was one, who was elected, and myself, and both of us were elected unanimously because we were seen as independents rather than party members.
Of course, yes.
So it was a great honour to be elected as mayor, and I've had what I would describe as a life-affirming term.
So, talking with all that, right? I know you, I'm sure you know, in this particular role that you have, what you call family life, you know, you put in the back button a little bit, I suppose. I know it's not easy.
Totally on the back button.
Totally on the back button, okay. So now, we from the Immigrants.ie, we cover everybody, you know, doesn't matter who we are, who one is, and because this is an online newspaper, and we, you know, like to enlighten people on how the system works, because politics, you know, is in everyday life, no matter what it is. Yeah. From economics to this and that. Now, there are, I know it's a fairly large number here, maybe about up to 15% perhaps, in this particular area. How do you feel, you know, the people who are living here now? Many of them call this year home, whether they come from Asia or Africa, from Latin America, in America, doesn't matter where. But the fact is, they are here to stay. And I'm sure people do encounter different sort of problems. And has anybody actually approached you personally to help sort out their problems?
Lots of people have approached me, and in some cases I've been able to help, and in other cases I haven't. If you take the housing issue, for example, that's a hugely difficult one, because if someone's on the housing list, but you have 20 or 30 people over a period of two months coming to you, you have no power, thankfully I say, to pick people out of that list because of your political patronage. And in the old days, my understanding is that kind of thing went on. But these days, South Dublin won't even give us the full list in terms of people's position on it. When I was a councillor the first time round, we would have been able to tell people, okay, you're number 33 on the list, this is when you might have had 4,000 or 5,000. Now you're talking about 10,000 on the list. And when someone is in danger of being evicted because the rent's being put up, and that's happened to an awful lot of people, it's virtually impossible to use any political sway. The only exception would be if people are clearly not getting the points allocation they're entitled to, because they weren't aware of it. In which case, you press that case. If there's particular family issues in terms of overcrowding, or a family member with a disability, you can help. Also, there are some families who are newcomers who would have language difficulties.
Of course, yes.
So you do what you can to, let's say, put forward cases in a cohesive way. But if you're on the homeless list, you've no say if this is Dublin Regional Homeless Authority, if it's the setup of the housing list, you only have an input in terms of making sure that people get their appropriate entitlement. The problem is the shortage of housing supply.
Of course.
And that's something, and that's something I would be pushing for, although I did get into arguments with some of my colleagues with the Camburgh Strategic Development Zone, for example, which is 8,000 houses planned, 25% of the land owned by the council. So you could see at least 2,000 socially affordable houses on that land, which I welcome. What I don't welcome, and I would argue with others, is we can't just build the houses without tying in access to shops, access to schools, access to transport infrastructure.
The amenities, yes.
And some people would say, well, motions that my group had put down on Camburgh would have delayed housing, and that with a housing crisis, you shouldn't do that. And my argument was, if you put it up to the agencies to provide the transport infrastructure, if the government is serious about providing houses, like they say they are, then they're going to have to make sure that, let's say, the NTA provides an orbital bus service by 500 houses, or extra train capacity by 2,000 houses. Those type of things were voted down in the Camburghs. But either way, we will see more house building going on in South Dublin, which will alleviate the problem in the medium term. But what I'm saying to people in the short term is, there's not much I can do. I can just try and press your case, but I don't have any magic powers neither, does any, any other elected representatives. That would be one issue. The other issue would be education, schools, and access to the same.
Well, of course, that's a very, very key issue, yeah?
Yeah. And there's some good progress in that to some degree. And whether as a TD, where I was almost on my own, I did get some support, trying to get to reversals in education cuts, we succeeded. And trying to make sure that the developing areas were set up in 2007, 2008, which basically put the department focusing on new areas. The, in Adamstown, for example, which, there's an Adamstown Castle Educate Together, which has 47 of the last count of different nationalities in it.
That's a really big number.
It's a huge number. So you're talking about people from all over Eastern Europe, from the Indian subcontinent, Pakistan, India, from Sri Lanka, people from different parts of Asia and from South America, African countries, huge amount of people, all get along very well. And in Adamstown, they have access to one of the local Educate Together schools, and they also have access to a Catholic denominational school. And what has helped in that regard is four of the Educate Together schools in Luton, and I paid tribute to them recently, they set up a common enrollment policy. The issue, I've been a great supporter of Educate Together patron for years, and I have nothing against other groups, I support all types of schools. But when Educate Together were trying to have a secondary school, or an influential secondary school, I would have pushed that on their behalf. When they wanted to get new school buildings in, I would have done likewise. But four out of the five Educate Together schools, one has a different management model, and 2014 set up a common enrollment system.
Yeah.
Now, that's hugely important, because if you're a newcomer to Ireland, your language isn't very fluent.
Nice, listen to this one, it's very crucial, okay?
Some of the schools, some of the Educate Together, obviously, what I find is, if you're, let's say, a Muslim family, you would send your children to either a Catholic school or an Educate Together school if there's no Islamic school. And you might want to send your girls to an all-girls school at secondary level. But at primary level, most of the parents appear happy to send kids, say, to an Educate Together school. Or whatever is the nearest school. But I would find the choice would be an Educate Together school in many cases for, let's say, Muslims or Sikhs or Hindus, purely because it's celebrating all the different festivals.
Of course.
And it's celebrating different cultures and diversity. All this, even the Catholic schools do that these days, but people would be aware of, let's say, that model from talking to their family and friends. But the Educate Together schools in Luton and largely around the country, they would have taken from birth.
Yes, of course.
So let's say you arrive in, you don't know too many people, you're just finding your feet. The last thing you're going to know is, oh, by the way, your one-year-old has, you're here with your one-year-old child, or you're here and you've just given birth, by the way, you have to apply for this school here and this school here if you want to get a place or get onto the list. A lot of people didn't know that. So what was happening was, they'd end up, they'd end up applying to schools for Urdur Field the year before. And a lot of schools do take it the year before, but the Educate Together schools didn't at the time. So they were left with less choice. Whereas now the four schools have basically set up a common enrollment, so they take from October, they try and integrate siblings, and they allocate the first available places based on Google Maps. So they've actually reduced traffic. But it's also a fairer system for all, all types of parents, because you now have a little bit of time, and they take on the basis of the oldest children eligible first as well. So if you have a four-year-old, a five-year-old going for a school place, they'll give it to a five-year-old over a four-year-old. And the other schools in Luton, there was a schools crisis in terms of accommodation. The primary schools have been good enough to meet that demand. The next challenge is at secondary level. But education in South Dublin County, that is, is a challenge still in terms of ethnic groups who weren't born originally in Ireland, or parents of kids born in Ireland but who weren't originally from Ireland. It's a little bit more of a challenge trying to engage with the school boards and management, and with teachers in terms of meetings, et cetera. The language barrier is a key challenge.
Now, tell me something, okay, many of them are, whether they're here 20 years, or whether they're five years, few months. What is, I know many of us in the, you know, I'm going back, you know, before, 16 years ago, with many organisations, communities, and, you know, people around were giving English language classes, helping out. Now, is there anything like that going on presently?
They do have language classes going on in libraries, for example. There are voluntary groups that do provide it, probably not enough. And what I would say is, there's the same problem from immigrant communities coming to Ireland as you have with Irish communities abroad. The Irish communities historically went to the United States, Canada, Australia, and in countries like that, it wasn't a bother, they could speak English.
Of course.
But I found it myself, going for holidays and periods, or from talking to colleagues who went to study for a year, they don't make an effort to learn German or French or Italian.
That's a problem.
They switch on the Irish stations. So it's the same thing if you're watching Al Jazeera in Ireland, and you're watching the Urdu language programme. It's human nature to go to something that's easiest. And in that context, it's a combination of not feeling the need to do it, but also not having enough emphasis on it. Personally, I would say, in terms of issues like citizenship, for example, I'd be very liberal in terms of allowing newcomers into Ireland, but I'd be very tight on putting conditions right and responsibilities. So that if you're here, you don't have an intellectual disability, that there should be a period where you have to be able to speak the language fluently. The grade if you're able to learn, put the fukel auf scale, the freshen, the schiene scale era. That's another story. But definitely, people will do something when there's a bit of a carrot and stick. There is no, there is no stick to say to people, really improve your English, it will help you. People feel comfortable within their own groupings. And that's where an area like Adamstown helps, where you've got maybe 60 different nationalities, because everyone's in it together, everyone sees they have to use the common interaction language really to learn. And I think that's the way forward. We're going to see, in the Camburghs I mentioned, as Adamstown develops as well, these, and I see it here as hugely positive, these really diverse communities that aren't typical of Ireland as a whole, but they are becoming increasingly typical in Dublin suburban areas. And I would be very optimistic actually in terms of how it goes, once we can get the mix of facilities and infrastructure right as well. Because with young people, for example, of any ethnic background, if you don't have things to keep them occupied, people get up to mischief, and they're not just talking about.
That's it, everybody, anywhere in the world, I suppose. Now, coming back to this language thing, I mean, I've been here quite a long time since last century. The thing is, I mean, I've always, what you call, I encourage people to study the language. Of course, people, when they go to foreign land, they all get together, whether they're students, I mean, just one of those things. You know, you and me, back in Malaysia, we were Irish pubs, you know, it's like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, the thing is, I really do, you know, back on this, what you've just said, because the emphasis, you've got to, you know, integrate. Okay, integration is a key issue here. I mean, we've had divisions on North Side, South Side, you know, D4 and D1, you know, the system goes on, you know. But the fact is, people are forgotten about that, more so, except for the previous generation. Now, when we have all these people coming in, they really have to adopt and adapt. Because I feel, you know, that's the situation of the host and the guest. I think we all have to, you know, play our role. But then, when you come across people who are adamant that they wouldn't like to participate, what would you do about people like that? We have them everywhere, anyway. But in your role today, you know, you're a politician at the end of the day, what would you like to say to the people who are still reserved about this, and they feel that, I mean, we feel that the fact that they are a trap, because they're going to want to integrate or participate? So what would you say to people like that?
Okay, well, the first thing, any major world religion, to my knowledge, has said that, like, if you take Islam again, for example, the teachings would be to follow the laws of the country we're in, and to mix with people, and to respect the rules. If you take, the same thing, I would find that people from, let's say, India slot in very comfortably, actually. I don't know, maybe it's the British colonial past, Pakistan as well. But there are some, I'm not going to mention specific nationalities or groupings, but there are some challenges as well. If, for example, you feel that you're, I suppose, tight in some way, that you, by mixing, you're actually testing your religious faith. I've said this to some people, for example, if you go, why not go to a pub at 12 noon in the locality, have tea or a soft drink, and...
Yes, why not?
And take it over, because we have a terrible alcohol problem in Ireland from the indigenous white majority. And we have a very unhealthy attitude. And, but yet, pub is a part of our culture.
Yes.
So it would be nice to see the pubs become more places where people meet and gather, and it's not about the alcohol side of it. And so there are safe times when people aren't going to get, like, I don't go into pubs at 10 o'clock at night in my locality, for a simple reason, someone's had a few jars, they're going to say, oh yeah, you know about that, about that, they put their arm around it, so come here, tell us, now, you're that, or that, you shouldn't be doing this, you shouldn't be doing that.
Yes.
And my attitude is kind of, right, what would they say to me if they hadn't had a few drinks?
Exactly.
And I was kind of, so I don't go in for that. So if you, if you come from an area that we are likely to be identifiable, so if you're from Nigeria, for example, or if you are clearly identifiable as someone who has a very Muslim-esque beard, and you happen to be in the local pub, there might be a lot of very friendly people who'll whoop to you, and some slagging or whatever goes on, but it's still, it's still kind of, you want to get to the situation where it's like, okay, there's someone who's clearly not born in Ireland, fine, no bother. Because in Ireland, if you take the likes of Bono or any famous people, Irish people historically have tended to ignore them.
Yes.
We don't want this celebrity culture, it's like, hey, there's Bono, yeah.
No, you don't have to, thank God for that.
None of that. So it should be the same thing. All right, okay, yeah, I see a whole group of people here with headscarves, and they're sitting down having a cup of tea, no bother. So I do encourage groups to go out. In my own area, for example, there has been quite a lot of, how would you say, groups contacting the wider community to come to their events.
Yes.
Or groups coming as a group to community events. And only a smaller number, and I, and I would say I would praise Africans in particular, that's a very broad spectrum, but only a small group have tended to go in as, hi, I'm Joshua, I'm Moses, and I'm involved, I want to get involved in this because of planning issues. It's normally, we're here because of our community, we're here to represent our community on this or that with Urdur. And I kind of say to them, why don't you just go as Ahmed who lives, or Ozario who lives in number 27 Castle Gate Village or whatever, and you're just here because you want to know when the sports hall is open. It's nothing to do with your, your kind of wider cohort. And that's, that's been a bit of a challenge to get people to do that, because people haven't had the opportunities to mix as much as they should. But if you take the Adamstown Strategic Development Zone, for example, there was a working group set up, one of the people on it, her name's Shadie, so I think she, I think she comes from, again, Nigeria. Mina, who is the chair of the interim board of management, is an Irish citizen originally from the south of India.
Yes, Mina is Indian, yes.
Yeah. And then you have people who are involved, the cricket club, be they Hindus, be they Muslims, and they're pushing to make sure there was cricket nets in the basketball court indoor sports space. And they got involved, they were at the Open Fund Day, you have people of maybe seven or eight major religious groupings at the fund day. So whether it was kind of full face cover, whether it was partial scarves, whether it was, let's say, obviously you've got your Sikh turbans, there was a very colourful display in Adamstown, and everyone was sending out to each other, everyone was mixing, because people had the opportunity, they knew there was something going on in the community, and they knew it was open to everyone, and they felt free and safe to do that. But that doesn't happen in every practice in South Dublin. And I think it happens in areas where you have quite a high concentration.
Of course, yeah, that people are willing to come out and do things.
Yeah. And I do think as a society, we're no more or no less racist than any other. And there's two types of racism. There's a go back to your own country racism.
Yeah.
And I've used that on a few people, once I thought they were Irish, and I saw them dropping litter, I'd shut out the window, go back to your own country. And they'd say, but it is my country. And I'd say, well, if it is your country, you should be proud of it.
You should be proud of it, yes.
And not be throwing litter. And then there's the kind of the, I suppose, the positive racism, where you go out of your way to be extra nice to someone. Which is, it's a good thing, but it's also like you're kind of compensating for some national, you're like you're apologising for other people's nast.
Yes.
So it should be a case that, okay, this person here happens to be Indian, this person here is from Poland, and you know, I think that person is an idiot, not because they're Polish, because they're root, or this person here from Nigeria, that's a root person. But it is getting to the stage where it's like, well, I like so-and-so, I like so-and-so, you don't view them as, I'm saying this from an Irish perspective, when I was a kid, obviously, there might be one or two dark-skinned faces on telly, and you knew nobody. And then growing up in my area, but in older parts of Luton, you still wouldn't see as many. So our kids, for example, might have, out of a class of 30, they might have maybe seven or eight, whereas some classes, some classes might have 10 or 11. And then because of the bad way in which planning happens in Luton, and schools originally went, and before the common enrollment as well, you ended up with, there were two, the schools in Adamstown, when I was chair of the Rocktus Committee on Educational Skills, we had two Educate Together schools and one Catholic school making presentation. And they were pointing out that between 85 and 95% of the kids in the schools had a non-English as a first language parent. And that, that was too far to go away, because that's not encouraging integration either.
No, it doesn't.
If the whole school is far. And it got to a stage where you, our own indigenous ethnic minority, travelling community, there were two kids, and I was told this story, there were two kids who were expelled for causing trouble in a school in Tally. So they ended up, I think it was in John the Evangelist National School in Adamstown. And what the principal said was that those two kids, in a short time, became celebrities. They were two white kids. And they weren't seen as travellers, so their behaviour actually improved dramatically, because they were treated just as normal white kids, normal white kids in the sense, in inverted commas. And that just shows you how treating someone normally has an influence. And the same thing would apply to treating somebody as no difference just because they happen to be a newcomer. And in parts of Luton, that's happening. It's just another, just another child, and that's hugely positive. But the parents, they're the ones who still have the challenges to try and get involved, because there's a fear that integration means assimilation. You know, that's always the question. Can you maintain your identity, your religious beliefs, your culture, and yet be another culture as well? It was actually said best, it was one of the pastors from the Christ Life Church, had a St Patrick's Day celebration the day after, so as not to interfere with the actual day. And it wasn't a big media thing, I was invited as mayor, there were a couple of guests, but they sang the national anthem in Irish and English. And they gave praise and thanks for being in Ireland, this is largely Nigerian, but they had a lot of African communities involved.
Yes.
And they, the pastor said, you know, I go back to Nigeria, I made it to buy a house there, and I've been out of Nigeria 20 years, and I used to always think, you know, it's great to have a house back home. So it was great when I got the money to buy a house back home, but then I talked about it more, and I said, well, you know what, Ireland is my home. I'm always going to be Nigerian, but Ireland is my home. So it's been able to celebrate both, and have no one kind of say, well, you have to renounce one because of the other. That's, that's the solution, in terms of the mindset of people. You could always be this and that.
Of course, yes.
But some people feel they have to be collectively of this.
They want to be identified.
Yeah, but there, it's also, I also fear it's, it's because either reluctance to challenge either cultural traits or religious traits. So it's basically a fear of, in some way, being challenged.
Yes.
And that's, that is a difficulty.
Well, of course, it does bring insecurity, you know, definitely. I mean, I'm from Malaysia, and grew up the English, the Irish, Malays, Chinese, and Indians, among Indian background. And the thing is, we were fortunate enough, then it took the British county, you know, but then my era, I mean, the educational system was quite different. So we knew about Ireland, we knew about most countries in the world by the age of 15, history, geography. But I know there's a lot lacking presently, and of course, syllabus has to change, and we have to adopt and adapt. But I'm glad you pointed out these things about the Africans. They are quite, rather very active actually regarding many different events, and they get, because I've worked with them for many, many years, even so now. And we have to adopt and adapt. But I'm glad you pointed out these things about the Africans. They are quite, rather very active actually regarding many different events, and they get, because I've worked with them for many, many years, even so now. But I know that the thing is, once people have, you know, they're settled in the country, you know, you become Irish citizen or, you know, whatever, then they seem to contribute less on the voluntary sector. And I face this all the time. And I would really encourage people to, you know, whether the Irish or, you know, I think minority groups. By the way, for the record, the travelling community is officially ethnic minority group as well. I'm glad that they have their recognition finally after all these years.
Exactly.
So now the thing is, I know people, you know, it's both sides, you know, for the host and the guest. So now the thing is, I know people, you know, it, it's both sides, you know, for the host and the guest about insecurity, threats and, you know, with the way things are going on in this world.
Yeah.
Just to, to, to finish off now, um, what would you, uh, up to your mayorship, it's finishing in the next couple of days, this week, and then, uh, you know. You go back to a bit of normality in your life. I know you'll still carry on doing things because of the past records. But what, would you have anything in mind now, okay, I'm leaving my legacy as a mayor, but you'll still be carrying on as a politician? And of course, as a, you know, with a journalistic background. What would you, what would you like to have to say, all right, this is what I like to do now for the future?
Yeah.
With the ethnic minority groups, plus generally for the area, what would you like to focus upon?
Okay, well, one thing I want to do is, and I'm conscious that I can't be spearheading it, but I am involved in this. Is to try and re-instigate Luccan community council.
Okay.
Um, there's other areas around, obviously, that I'd have ideas about, but I've just mentioned this one specifically because it, it ties in with, with the large number of newcomers in, in Lucca. Um, up until two thousand and two, Luccan did have a community council very largely based around the village area. And Adamstown is identified as Adamstown. And, and yet it's clearly still within the Luccan area, it's a local G A club, Luccan South Spills is Froder South and then Adamstown. So a community council that would cover the entire, uh, you know, fifty thousand population of the greater Luccan area. I would try to get groups, um, aware so that individuals come from those groups.
Yes.
And go to meetings and, and be part, be residents who are on the community council. So that it reflects, if it does get restarted, that it's not the same twenty people who were on it twenty years ago. That it's actually a much more diverse community council, so it would include, um, going from, and I'm conscious not all of your followers, uh, 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 in the local will, will know Luccan. But Balgady is kind of half Condonk or half Luccan.
Yes, yes, yes.
Heading towards North Condonk, they'd be welcome. Uh, and Fingal County is a small area called Laricom which is Luccan, but it's, it's not in South Dublin, they'd be welcome. Adamstown as an entity would be welcome. And then the historical, uh, older parts of Luccan. So if you can get the right mix of people who are fighting a common cause and issues, uh, it gives, the, the old Irish saying, uh, neinartika cura, neinatka. Which means basically there is no strength without unity.
Of course.
If you had a unified voice, that isn't political. So my idea of a community council would be that it shouldn't be open to people who are running for election. Or it shouldn't be open to people who, uh, who, who are former people trying to get their, their feet back on the ground. You should have a community background, interest in politics, fine, be in the public for practical reasons. But it's about the community that you're working with others to try and make it better. So that you're lobbying politicians, lobbying agencies for a common cause.
Yeah.
If we, if we can get that up and running again, I think there's potential, uh, to, to try and get more involvement. The, the fundamental problem is that everyone's busy and language is still an issue. When I did a, I, I tried it once, um, when I was having a meeting, uh, about the review of the strategic development on Adamstown. I, I put on about, uh, twenty different translations of public meetings.
Very good.
Um, which takes a bit of effort, cause Google Translate isn't, isn't ideal anyway.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I put it around the top. Um, but it is the case that if English isn't your first language.
Yes.
You may not even notice this invitation. So word of mouth, trying to, you're still gonna have to network with groups and say, listen, can you make sure people go to this? Um, and then feedback, so you, you still will have a need for group network or i- identity networks. But, um, it, it, it's gradually phasing out, I don't, I was at the, uh, celebrations of Filipino, where I went metro last, uh, of independence from Spain.
Yes.
Um, I know it's a small enough community in South Dublin, um, but you don't see the Filipinos kind of, um, coming together as a highway of Filipinos.
Yes.
You, you, you don't see the Poles do it anymore because they're.
A second.
Yeah, maybe they're invisible as well because their, their skin colour ties in with their, their Catholic background. But I would love to see more Eastern Europeans, more Russians.
Yes.
Uh, participate. Um, but again, it's down to language, if they don't, if they don't get what you're looking for, because the words, like if you say strategic development zone, for example. Um, that's not your standard level, how are you?
No, of course not.
What's the story, yeah, it's, it's a little bit, requires a bit more knowledge. So there's an onus on agencies in, in Ireland, including South Dublin, uh, to try and be a little bit more, um, helpful. I know South Dublin does you, does provide, um, a different, different types of events. They, they have translated into several different types of lang- different languages, maybe ten or eleven. Um, but for elected representatives, we don't have the resources to, to get that done for us. Um, but there is, there is, there is a case to be made that the authorities, and this will go out position from people in Ireland as well. Um, the authorities will have to put some things into the most well-known languages. Arabic, for example, Urdu, for example, Hindi, that, they, there will need to be something to attract people to get involved. Um, and to recognise their cultural background, while at the same time not tipping it over. So it says to Irish people, oh, they're putting everything in all these other languages and, and we're not, you know, we're still have enough signs in their own Irish language. So there's a balance, if it's under the right times, you, you get it, but you, you can't, language is, I would say is one of the last forms of, last forms of discrimination, even to a certain extent.
But unfortunately, you know, when they say, when you're a Roman, uh, do as Romans do, so.
But that's fine, if they can't understand you're asking people to do that.
Yes, exactly. But I also feel, I know, uh, a lot of people will slaughter me for this or whatever.
Sure.
Yes, I feel sometimes we go overboard in being politically correct. Uh, we, we can't say things anymore, which is a bit dumb, because behind your back, everybody's saying it anyway. So, uh, you know, like, one of the things that really bugs me after this day, blah, blah, black shit, that still bugs me.
And I, I have a personal one, if someone's taking a very niggardly attitude, niggard comes from the French, has nothing to do with the other N word.
The other N either.
Or it's like, hang on a second.
Yes, this is the thing.
Political correctness gone mad, but it, everyone can take offence and if people, if people do feel offended by something, you still have to recognise that.
We, we have to, we, we, we have to take, you know, not so much take a bit, uh, bit of salt or something. We are required to learn about other people's cultures so that they integrate better with us. The onus is also on the guest to be able to make sure that they also learn about, not just about the Irish, about all the other people living in your community. And just like when we say we're having different events, you know, where you host, you know, county council will host it or, you know, whatever, whoever is doing these things. I, I still believe that we've still got a long, you know, a long way to go, because it's, um, like they used to work, the new Irish. Everybody's still the same, once you're Irish, you're Irish. But then now we're identifying again about the new Irish, some people like it, some people don't. To be, doesn't bother me the least.
Well, to me, new Irish is someone who hasn't yet got citizenship.
Yes.
And if someone who's got Irish citizenship, to me, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter who, yeah, you are, you're an Irishman. Now, many people misunderstand this thing, this concept about the new Irish, thinking that the new Irish are also the present generation. The ethnic minority groups who've been, were just born over the five, ten years ago.
Yeah.
That they are the new Irish, you see? So we have to, you know, we have to say things to identify. Of course we have to do that, because this, that's the only tool we have.
Yeah.
But on the same token, I think people have to be a bit more, not over liberal or to, 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 to five strings. I think we have to have a proper balance here, so that, you know, like us, the immigrants dot I E, we actually encourage people.
Yeah.
To participate, I always say, focus, commit and participate. And you have to be able to do things for a more vibrant community, for a better, you know, for your social status. That you have to do things, and the proof of eating is in the pudding. Now, with all this going on around and with fake news and this and that, nobody really knows where they stand.
You have to have face to face interaction, I was at a lift at a dinner in South Dublin Mac Tab recently.
Uh huh.
And I repeated what I said to the Filipino community, which was, don't be afraid to stand up and express yourself and ask for something. And even demand it, um, be, be, for fear of being ostracised or fear of getting a backlash.
That's true.
If you're here and you're contributing, you have the same rights as anyone else. But you also have the same responsibilities, that's.
That's the thing, the rights and responsibilities, these are quite, you know, and we have to be very, um, honest about things. That we have this thing also, uh, you know, but if somebody is responsible, doesn't really mean that person is reliable. And, you know, it's like, you know, oh, I, I can rely on you for coming in early every day, you're great. But then the other guy was more responsive, comes late all the time, he does a good job. You have to have that balance in life, sure. And just like, you know, I really like, you know, this is a very, quite an interesting conversation whereby we are getting, um, a lot of information from our guest today. And we will do so in the future as well with other guests that are gonna, uh, come on the show. And, but I'd like to really congratulate you on your work, I met you a couple of times and I feel that, you, you know, you're, you're contributing positively. And I do like that about people, because if all, we can have our chance and, you know, it's adoration and look, I'm so and so. But at the same token, you've got to practise what you preach, at the end of the day. I think born are the days when you, you know, it's who you know, that's all changing now.
Thanks.
And, um, I've been doing this integration work for the past thirty years, ever since I came to Ireland. It's been a pleasure to know you, it's been a pleasure having a chat with you. And from the immigrants dot I E, please give your views, you know, log on and subscribe to us, it's still free. And give your comments, please, okay? And Logan Raji from the immigrants dot I E, congratulations, Mr Mayor or councillor.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, of course you can.
And during my term as mayor, I did have the opportunity to meet with many people from, originally born in many different countries.
Yes.
Uh, and in some cases, taking Nigeria again, the Ashun, the, the Yoruba.
Yes, yes.
Delta state. Um, it was a fantastic experience, I've never received anything other than the utmost of warmth from, from all of the people. And I think they're a credit to South Dublin and I want to see people more engaged because they have so much to offer and valued than myself and I hope our county does as well.
Well, well, I'm sure in the future that we have the council elections coming in ne- uh, October next year, is it?
Uh, the local elections could be, um, next May, general election might be before, we don't know.
Before that, so that, that's about a year left, still can go on the campaign, um, and you can, you know, participate. Make sure you are something to offer to the society, not just to your own community, but to everybody at large, because we are all neighbours. We have to practise what we preach and there's peace and love from the immigrants that I E. Logan Raji saying goodbye and our mayor, Paul Gogety, thank you very much, stay safe, God bless, thank you. Pleasure.